Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens City Council. It's Monday, June 11th, a little past seven o'clock. We're running a little bit late with our beginning tonight. But this is committee night. We have three committees who will be meeting. City and Safety Services Committee chaired by Kent Butler. Finance and Personnel Committee chaired by Chris Nysley, who is out of town. Steve Patterson is going to be doing the heavy lifting there. And the Transportation Committee chaired by Alahu Ghazni, who also is out of town. I think Michelle Pappy is going to talk about those issues. Okay, so we're going to begin this evening with City and Safety Services Committee.
Public hearing first.
Oh, public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm just going right ahead.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, the second of the two for the CVG Community Development Block Grant Small Cities Program. This is a formula. The first one we had was March 26th. So this is the second of two. Essentially, it's to take input from various public entities and find out what we want to do with the money. It runs about 85,000, but after you take out the administration and the home, what was it, discrimination, housing discrimination program.
Fair Housing.
Fair Housing, yeah, sorry. Good thing you got it, not me. We run about maybe 70,000, 75,000, maybe somewhere in that. It's a formula that gets adjusted every year. The project we're aiming at right now is going to be the Columbus Road and Lancaster corridor. What we're looking, of course, is about 87,000 from the C W G funds, about 400,000 for Issue One funds. This is what we try for every year through the Public Works. And again, that usually tops out by 400. The local funds would have to be running somewhere between $700, $272,000. So we're talking about almost a total cost of $750,000 when it's all added together. It would be take going from, let's see, I think it starts somewhere near Johnny Appleseed Park, goes up Lancaster the second, and then from the second down to Columbus Road. Different amounts would be done. Some of it's just asphalt overlay, other ones will include the addition of utilities, curbs, sidewalks, and then the asphalt overlay. Mostly in that Lancaster area. Of course, the curbs are already kind of flush with the street. So that's what we're proposing. The application, I think, goes in the 22nd of June, and at that point, I'll take any comments because this is a public hearing.
There was some paperwork that I saw go by talking about some grinding and paving on Columbus Road that were going to, is going to be happening this week, actually.
I think that's the patching, isn't it?
That's the patching from down as far as Terrace Drive. That would be kind of preparatory work for this?
Well, no, not really. That's just probably straight-out patching.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are some big holes there.
Yes, there are, yes. We're running patching all the time. We may have to go back and redo things as well. Hopefully, we get the organization not close the streets too much for various activities. Okay, well, no, this is, that's separate. That's just general maintenance.
Okay, that's just.
It'll require a little bit more than that because we'll have to grind it all up and do the asphalt. I think we're taking the top off and putting back on asphalt on. Any other questions? Yes?
Does this go the entire length of Columbus Road?
That's, the map shows it, yes. Well, it's a little bit short, somewhere by the BP station, but I'm just guessing from the map.
City limits.
City limits.
All the city limits. Well, that's about a mile?
It's longer than a mile, I think. It doesn't, I don't have a distance on it. At least he didn't send me one.
Probably striping of a bike lane. And as you know, those water lines break all the time at the top of North Lancaster and just come down. We've had fairly good success with packaging these through, like, to get the other grants to assist us and not through the Public Works Commission.
Yeah, essentially, they always like to see some leverage, local dollars and others. So, and again, this is, this needs to be done.
Is this, include the water lines, too?
Go ahead.
Including the water lines?
The water lines.
Just on Lancaster.
Yeah, basically from Second down to North Lancaster. We, if you remember, we did a lot of the water lines and sewer lines, what, four years ago, five years ago?
Going up Columbus Road?
Actually, we did it whole new.
That's what I mean.
Lift station, yes.
Yes.
So those are in good shape.
Yeah, that's all, that's already been done. It's the other, it's from Second Street down towards the city.
New hydrants also?
I assume so. I don't know. I have, we don't have a list yet. We're trying for the dollars, depending on the dollars.
Sure, sure.
Yes, go ahead.
When you said bike lanes, so you're talking about all the full length of Columbus Road? Yes, but I'm sure we'll happy having the discussion on whether or not it's needed going down because the cyclists traditionally tell us they don't like that. We have a fairly good width, as you know, that was all the state route, so.
Yeah, probably a wide berm. This is very similar, probably to the Pomeroy Road upgrade we did where the question is, do you want sidewalks, do you want wide berms? And I know there's a lot of bicycle traffic up there.
There is.
And if you remember, there was discussion about trying to link our bike paths eventually to Columbus Road. So we want to anticipate if there, if we get the funds for that, that there would be some place to go that's safe.
This does not include sidewalks in that Columbus Road section? We'll repair them in the Lancaster.
Yeah, just be off to the side for the bike route, bike lane.
And we have sidewalks that go down to Sunset on the west side, and we have some that go almost all the way to the other Lancaster turnoff, North Lancaster, where it meets Columbus Road. I think it stops just shorter there. The church that's there, I think, doesn't have any sidewalk, even the old highway patrol station, I don't think a sidewalk in front of it.
Stops the fire station. It passes.
It goes a little past the fire station, yeah, that's what I noticed.
Yeah, but not that far. It stops about halfway down that hill on that side. And again, this is, you know, we're working on the road. Any other questions? Questions from the public?
I've got a quick question. It's kind of a follow-up to Memorizer's comment about fire extinguisher, hydrants.
Hydrants, yeah.
Rather, knowing that that's going to continue to be a corridor, hopefully that we see economic development take place down there. I hope that that's something that's taken under consideration, that, you know, having adequate number of hydrants down there or whatever ordinance allows for anyway, to continue to grow through that corridor rather than have to add more later.
Well, okay, I don't know where all the hydrants are. I imagine those are fire department people do.
They're mapped.
Yeah. Probably, I know there's capacity there, so that's not the problem. I guess the other question would be development and what goes in because how much water you use and what the flow would look like. But as far as I know, the flow is adequate there for everything we need. Anything else? Okay, thanks, we're closed.
Okay, now we'll go ahead.
Everybody needs to sign up though.
Yes, they did. There's four signatures there and there's four people here. No, you don't have to sign up.
Did we, there's the paper right there.
Yeah, we got everybody.
Did you?
Yes. They actually came in signed.
Okay.
You were efficient.
Head of the game. And I just tried to move right ahead with committee meetings. Now we actually will begin City and Safety Services Committee chaired by Kent Butler.
Thank you. I will, the first topic of discussion here is the multi-house street parties, and I'm biding some time to allow the City Service Safety Director to find her chair so that she can offer discussion and information on this. I know our chief has been putting some thoughts and ideas together regarding this with safety being paramount, and he is, was unable to attend this evening, is my understanding. So our City Service Safety Director has some information and some ideas to share with us as well as our president of council.
Thank you. We all know what occurred this spring, and we're all ready to take some action to see how we can possibly prevent or regulate or what have you in order to deal with what we call the multi-house street party events. After speaking with President Sands, it's indicated that the willingness of council to appoint a task force to start addressing these during the summer and having the conversation so that when we come back to the students have returned, that we can engage them and maybe carry forward with some ordinance revisions. The chief has asked for, to look at this at a three-pronged approach: prevention, perhaps regulation, permitting, dare we say, enforcement of the nuisance ordinance, and maybe looking at that for any stronger language in that, and also how are we going to assign costs as you've all read and know, the great costs that the city has to bear in order to make this as safe event as possible. So with that, Chairman Sands.
We're looking at a task force that would include some members of Student Senate who are actually here throughout the summer, so we want to include as many students as possible from areas of responsibility. Obviously, Ohio University and City Administration, members from Athens City Council. We need some reputation, some representation from landlords and other community members who were affected or who were just heard about the issues and have some feelings there. So, again, as the Service Safety Director indicated, we really want to start on this during the summer and hopefully would have something to present in September, both to City Council and Student Senate as a whole body, and probably at some point, the University Administration. So I anticipate getting going with this in the next couple of weeks. So if we have people who are interested, can Clerk of Council, can they contact you, please? And if we don't hear from people, we'll be contacting them.
Thank you.
Chief Pyle, by the way, is sick. Sounds like the flu to any of us who are not trained in this kind of stuff, so that's why he's not here tonight to talk about this.
Can, for council members who may not be on the committee, I think that it might, I would like to put in, we need to look at length of party season. It's interesting because with the change to semesters, we're all hoping that's going to change. However, you know, that probably won't necessarily happen. You know, they'll go out and freeze to death out on their front porches. But I think that because what happens with a lot of people who talk to me, it's six or seven weekends, every weekend, the thumping and the constant not being able to have the police deal with all the other things, and that's a real, it's not just every individual occurrence, it's every single weekend for a big, long time when you look at the calendar. So I think that that's something that they need to address.
Senator Patterson, Sheriff's Safety Director, do you have anything else to say right now? We're going to go on.
Regarding the task force.
Yeah, I would, I would like to just suggest, as a friendly suggestion, have a member from J-PAC be appointed to this committee as well.
And J-PAC stands for the Joint?
The Joint Police Safety Advisory Council.
Which, which again, is another reminder of efforts between university and the city to cooperate, work together collectively for the benefit of the whole.
Correct.
With the community.
Well, I feel like that they absolutely will be there. I mean, that both chiefs are there, you're on the Joint Police, but that out of the Joint Police Advisory Council that met last week, they did request Graduate Student Senate also, and I thought that made sense.
Member Reisner?
How large do you see, how many members do you see on this task force?
It's growing. I originally saw maybe nine or 10.
Something manageable?
Yeah, I, it's not going to be 35. Maybe we might go up to 15. I mean, just the list of people that are, that have mentioned this evening are adding up, and so, but yeah, I would see somewhere 10 to 15, which I view as manageable.
Depending on the manager.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. And, you know, I know many of us on councils, what the officials receive feedback from community members about their concerns regarding safety, regarding quality of life and.
Costs.
Costs, taxpayer money, and these are all relevant issues when considering what happens at some of this street events, party events. Anything else regarding this?
No, gives me good guidance and a good start.
Yes. So moving on to water line projects, so Project 264, and again, I will seek some guidance here from City Service Safety Director, but we received, after an email from our Public Works Director regarding the request for appropriation of money, correct?
Correct. As you know, I believe we've already spoken about the fact that the water line bids for the three different areas of town came in too high. The ultimate decision was made to reject all bids. Of the three different areas, the city engineer views West Union as to be the most critical and would like to still accomplish it this year. The difference, what has occurred, though, is we've lost that certain opportunity for funding through the Ohio EPA for the utilizing their loan. So he's looked into funding it in-house, believe we can do it, dividing it between water maintenance and also using street rehab because a portion of that, of course, will be to repave the street when it's done. The concern from the auditor's office was not having enough operation carryover. So we're going to have a discussion this week, but there should be something before you on Monday in order, authorizing us to go ahead and get this project started with these possible dollar amounts of $496,000 at water maintenance, $98,000 out of street rehab, which is an increase of $5,000 from the original engineering design.
Nothing from Storm?
No.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, nothing from Storm, I don't think, is indicated in this. There is still some issues with maybe engineering costs.
Yes. We'll have that all wrapped up in some, some form of an ordinance that would authorize us to go ahead and proceed and bid it and get that project done. The other reason for the urgency is in order to get that accomplished prior to when the students return in August.
And knowing.
The good news is it won't be happening at the same time we're closing Oxbow Bridge.
Right. And it is a short summer, as we've discussed before. Would you then guess that we'll likely have to suspend rules?
We indeed will.
So we're prepared for that now?
Could, I'm sorry, could you remind us of the West Union section?
High all the way down to Schaefer.
Thank you.
We actually increased the scope to come all the way up to High because that's been problematic.
Which would be a new surface for the homecoming parade.
That's right.
Show it off.
We'll have it done by then.
We've had multiple water breaks there of the.
Yeah, multiple, yeah. That was gravel.
And there's all kind hydrant that's not functioning right now on Union.
Right.
It's by Union and Factory, I believe.
And the issue with the carryover, the issues from the water fund, that seems to be all resolved.
No, I don't know that it is. That's what, we'll have a conversation with the auditor to determine whether or not we have to, they suggest we borrow locally a portion in order to not cut into that operation carryover.
Water fund, yeah.
So, she's just now reviewing the information. Everything's happening very rapidly, so.
I don't have anything under miscellaneous unless there's something else listed.
Chairman Butler, I, a member, Patterson, has.
Oh, a comment or question or point?
Do you want to talk about?
I had to think about that one for a moment. I do. We have a guest with us this evening. Gene Arms would like to put up and address council with regards to the vendors permits and in particular, what constitutes a vendor versus not a vendor. So therefore, Mr. Arms, you need to sign in.
It's up at the podium.
Should be a pad up there to sign in.
Sure.
Name and your address, address. And there is no time limit on this, correct?
There's a three-minute rule.
Is it a three-minute rule?
No.
Oh, yeah, it's just.
First off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Gene Arms. I'm one of the owners of College Bookstore. Partner's here, Andrew Staudt is here with me tonight. And we wanted to speak concerning the B vending areas at the side of our store. We're having issues with, at the end of every school quarter, out-of-town vendors coming in, utilizing that space for a fee of $75 to go into direct competition with us. They're coming in, they're buying up books, siphoning off the local books, taking them out of town and leaving. I don't really think that's what city had in mind when they created this vending area. I thought it was more for local people to be able to develop a business and maybe move off in there. But what we're getting here is just, they're coming in cherry-picking at a good time and disappearing. We've had issues as to whether the buggies are used in our legal or not. We, according to code interpretation, they are legal, so I think we really need to more strictly define what a legal buggy is at this time. I brought some pictures, if you're interested, if you'd like to see them. Mr. Staudt could pass out to you so that you could see what I'm speaking of.
Yeah, yeah, sure, thank you. It's helpful information.
I've got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
As you can see, the first picture there, that's what the vending area looked like for most of last week. This company, Textbook Fetchers, which calls themselves a local company in upstate New York. Takes this space, perks or support vehicle on this space, so they tie up two vending areas. These people are from out of state, can't figure out who they are, show it up in a U-Haul trailer. Now, according to city code, a U-Haul trailer, it's vague as to whether that would actually be a vending vehicle because the city code states that it must be a vehicle, the sole purpose of the vehicle must be for vending.
Interpretation.
Obviously, that's not for vending. I mean, we have aesthetic issues there, I mean, there's signs all over these things that we couldn't legally post on our, on our business. This Clipper trailer had five different loose banners hanging on it and seven balloons, all of which are illegal for us to even attempt to do according to city code. Textbook Fetchers has a sandwich sign here, which one of the other local uptown businesses wound up in a lot of trouble over. What I'm really wanting to do at some point is to discuss this further and see if there's some way we can tighten up the rules for this vending area and make it more difficult for out-of-state vendors to come in and just cherry-pick our business and leave town. You know, we have a 60-year track record of being in business on Court Street. We pay local taxes, we employ 50 people. These people swoop in, they're gone. It's not fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ask me a question?
Sure.
Go ahead. We're talking about vending here. How do you define vending? Are they vendors or are they not under, under the code, as you understand?
And the way that is interpreted by the Code Enforcement Office, it is vending whether they're selling or buying.
Okay.
Vending is vending whether you're doing it either direction. So, because that was one of my questions with if we could possibly do away with this because they are not selling anything, they are buying, that's all they're doing. Now, whether, that would be a legal question that has to be answered, is whether you could actually define, actually define that as an area to sell and not to buy. That's a question for someone with legal expertise to answer.
If I may ask?
Yeah.
I did have some updates from the code office, just to kind of give you some information, which are there. What is allowed are 4A licenses and up to 20B licenses. That sounds like a lot. Currently, we have three As and five Bs with two evening Bs. Along with the, this idea of concept of changing sale of only versus purchase of, the code director has also stated, you could change the definition to include buyback operations or not permitted for, for 11.04, 0.13, and then add it to both categories. So I think there's some changes that could occur to prevent this.
Go ahead, sorry.
If I may, I mean, I brought the code with me, and I do want to answer your question, Memorizer. In here, it specifically states, in terms, under the definitions, to vend or vending is the sale of legal goods, wares, vehicles, from vehicles, stands, carts, machines, wagons, those approved by the city. But this, it also addresses within that same ordinance, peddlers or peddling and soliciting, but all, both of those, as well as I read this, are also in reference to the selling of said wares or future wares. As I read it, there is nothing in there about the ability to purchase something, so again, I started to do some digging into this as well. I understand that.
That might well be a effective way to pursue things.
Same thing to me.
Have the law director review it. One of the fears is if you require the sale of, then it does it become, do they have some sort of incentive, do they, do they change the game plan that they're doing? I wouldn't mind asking the law director's office for an opinion.
I'm curious as well if there is legislation in other college towns that addresses or covers.
Maybe this is what we could research and maybe have, have this raised at a committee meeting.
Sure.
This was, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
And I'd be glad to come back at any point and discuss this further with you if you have any questions or if you need clarification on anything.
And we kind, I'm sorry, we kind of interrupted your committee meeting.
No, no, that's fine.
I appreciate you coming because it's important when citizens and business people come and talk to us a little bit about what they see as a, we've had this issue here recently of not, where there's some interpretation in the code and do we need to.
Right.
Improve the language in the code.
That seems to be our sticking point now. We couldn't remove them last week due to interpretations of the existing code.
Right.
So we just need to clarify it, tighten it up.
Right. So we really, oh, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Arms.
Any other miscellaneous?
Concerning this, the vending, again, what there used to be when Baker Center was the student center, there used to be a waiting list for all these licenses, both A and B. That is obviously not occurring, so it would behoove us to whittle it back at least in terms of numbers. Just because there are only so many spaces there to start with. It's nice to say that the spaces should be competitive. There, if you remember, I forget how many years ago, they put a use or lose clause in the licenses because there were parties who were holding on to licenses and therefore not, not using them, just tying them up so the competition wouldn't be there. I think it's 20 days, and most of these book sale purchases are actually there probably for 20 days. It may change next year as everybody goes to semesters because right now, the staggered ability, they have then the ability to come in after the semesters at OSU or Kent and then proceed to, you know, pick up the books here. But I would say probably the thing to do is actually try whittling down the vending licenses a little bit, especially the Bs. Something to look into. It's an option.
And I think there also was some discussion about, there are other people buying back books, but some of that's going towards a charitable or some kind of organization on campus, and those are not what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, my biggest problem is they're 50 feet from my front door going business for $75.
Yeah.
And that's the price of vending license, which could actually change as well if you choose. I mean, these are all negotiables.
Options.
Options, yeah.
Let's move on to finance and personnel. Member Patterson is going to handle most of this.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that I have. The first item that I have is, as I understand it, the safe routes to school. Schools has awarded $1,000, but based on the latest estimates, that that's going to increase to $147,000, and so we'll have to appropriate $5,000 as needed for the continuation of that project.
Do you know what that particular activity is going to involve?
It's regarding, I think from the email I saw here on the old smartphone, from the engineer's public works office, this is to work on construction of, let's see, I think there's updates to the
I have it here too, if you want me to look.
Yeah, the Miller sidewalk on Miller by Arts West.
Right.
And sidewalk sections on South Shannon Avenue. And the grant for this project will reimburse the city $145,342, is my understanding.
Thank you. Sidewalks are always a good idea. Thank you. I keep interrupting, I'm sorry.
It's fine. The second item is the city surface safety director requests the appropriation of $5,000 for the demolition of a house on Hawking Street. And the cost will be added on to the property tax once that demolition is completed.
Unfortunately, the update I received is, they've only received one bid to date, it's less than the threshold, they're just receiving them via mail, and it was $8,500. So this figure could change by next Monday, depending upon who submits and what we can get in terms of that. It's commonly referred to as the old church on Hawking. I think you know.
Another item is a request to move forward on the hiring of the 25th police officer. There are 25 positions. This is not adding a new position, this is filling a vacant position, which has been vacant for quite a while, as I understand it. So therefore, the budget can support this for the 25th officer, and again, this is not a new position. I have two announcements. Oxville Bridge repair, the bid has been accepted by Shelly and Sands. Again, it's $3.1 million. Obviously, that won't be taking place until next summer, so not this summer. However, this year, we will be purchasing the steel for the bridge itself, so that will be going forward, and we'll be hearing more about that. And finally, I
From an Ohio company, no.
Domestic.
US.
Domestic steel.
Maybe Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, maybe.
Certainly not from Athens. And finally, my last announcement is that everyone, I hand it out to everyone on council, the perfection groups, Phase Two proposal, we met with the perfection group and several city staff to look at Phase Two. Phase Two is broken down into essentially kind of Option One and Option Two. Option One is an abbreviated option to where it is selected items. The total amount for the selected items is $385,000. Then there's also another option on there, which is Option One, which is the full amount, where it is all items to include the larger ticket items, mechanical, this is replacing things like chillers, air conditioning units, high-vac systems, as well as the automation, so it's replacing thermostats and things of that nature, which comes in at $739,000. One thing I do want to point out is that council members should look through this and look to see if this is something to consider in whole, or to break this down into smaller components, which is what perfection group has done in the past, where they've allowed for kind of picking and choosing, if you will. The one thing I, another thing I want to point out real quick, though, is that there is one item that's worth considering more quickly, and that is the lighting section of this, which is, I'm blanking on how much it is, $100?
$112,000.
$112,000. The reason for this is those, the lighting falls under a rebate, and that rebate will expire July 31st. Therefore, this may be something that is handled as a separate ordinance, as well as possibly something under suspension rules because of that particular timeline.
I want to contribute this to the side. This is coming from the AP community listing, they give out like a paper newsletter, and it covers mostly rebate for the T-12, is it, lighting systems. They're phasing out a fluorescent system, and they're actually offering rebates for the timeline that goes forward from now. It's going to end, I forget the actual date, so we could actually get some rebate on just replacing out the fluorescents as part of the perfection group listing, just so you know.
The auditor's office has gone through and determined how much would be general fund, how much, you know, the water, sewer, recreation. It looks like it's possible. And yes, if it were presented, we of course would ask for the emergency suspension and what have you, in order to get this accomplished in five weeks or something like that.
What's possible, you said this is possible.
Well, for general fund, the money's already available. We're not talking about borrowing any money for the lighting, number one.
Just for the lighting we're talking about right now?
But it will be about 50 or 52,000 out of the general fund. The other funds do have money available, but, so you know.
Worth mentioning is that things like lighting, you know, that's the fastest return on investment when it comes to lighting, in terms of the savings that come about with going from the T-12 to the T-8 lighting.
So do we want to move forward or not, is that what you're saying?
We may, after further consultation with the auditor's office and looking at those funds, have something up for Monday, which again, would ask for the emergency and suspension. We may also include some improvements to Arts West if we need that additional appropriation for windows and an air conditioning unit, kind of fit someone on the same lines. I'm sorry, it's not an air conditioning unit for the entire building, it'd just be for an office at this point in time.
She can open the door.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, any questions or comments for finance and personnel at this moment? We're going to move on to the transportation committee. Michelle Pappy filling in for Chair Ilah, who goes.
So safe routes to schools, we're going to discuss that. I thought we already did. This is a different safe routes to schools. Is it the same one?
It's the same, but it has all the, what's needed separate from the money.
So we discussed, we just, in the last discussion, we discussed the $147,000 and the additional five, right? Is that what you're talking about? And then we authorized, or you're requesting to authorize the service safety director to spend, expend up to $170,342 on the project? That's what the project is going to cost. So that means, where is that? Now, it doesn't say on here where that money is going to come from, the additional monies.
Just a number, that item number three, to get that, the total amount. Sometimes what happens is that we change, we find out that there's an additional cost, and I'm limited by the legislation that had been previously passed, so this one will get updated, and Debbie will have it all in place on Monday for
So I see the total appropriation for the additional five, but you're going to need more than that, aren't you?
Not, that's my understanding from the city engineer.
Would this also be further reimbursable by 100%? Or is this above, beyond our
I view that more like, what is that? It's, the percentage is only on the construction, we have to pay for engineering and design separate from that.
So is this increase in engineering costs, or is it increase in
He states it's construction cost there.
I
We've pulled out Morris Avenue bikeway spur due to land ownership issues, but he's going to go ahead with internal funds and at least get a spur to that, what do we call it, an access drive that the Conservancy District uses.
I thought that's what the extra money is for, no?
No.
Okay.
It's separate, we've pulled it out of the project completely.
Okay.
We couldn't meet the timeline.
I don't know.
So there's like 20,000, basically, that we're, I don't, we're unsure where that's
That, that's more of our local cost, local share, a little more than that, 2025. So what we'll be seeking is
So that money
Just the legislation that's been adjusted that will incorporate those dollar amounts.
About 20,000 or so.
Which was an extra 5,000?
Yes, and again, all the correlating legislation, so.
Right. Authorizing you to advertise acceptives and enter in the contracts.
And all the other cost is internal? Is that what's happening?
Yes, the reimbursement that he anticipates is around the 145,000, so he'll pull that from his street funds.
Get reimbursed to him.
Okay.
I had a question about.
Yeah.
We're building sidewalks in the area around Arts West. When we build sidewalks, we are not assessing property owners.
This piece of sidewalk that we're talking about near Arts West is actually on our property, it'll be on the Arts West side of Miller.
Okay, on that side, okay.
Yeah, what you're seeing is Miller has no sidewalks, so there's a transition from West State Street, where you come down to Cemetery, and then Miller's one block, literally, and then you go to Walker. The difficulty there, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic back and forth there. Technically, you could probably take the Arts West stairway up, go across, come down the parking lot, but nobody does that. The design we're discussing right now is to put, that'd be on the west side of Miller, which means cutting into the side of the hill on Arts West, because that's where the right-of-way exists. And so somebody could just walk right across and go down and not be in the street, that's the hope. You know, again, it's an organic thing, some people are walking the road regardless of what happens. So that's one portion. Shannon was the other part, and I thought there was one on Watts, too, a section on Watts.
It might just be a small section, but to answer your question, President Sands, no, there is not an assessment associated with this
We'd assess ourselves.
So it's because there's no sidewalk there in the first, not fixing sidewalks.
Exactly, that's what I was leading up to, yeah.
And I guess I'd just like to say on the Arts West project, I view that as critical. They do have an after-school program that the children walk up from West, and they need a safe way to get from West Elementary to Arts West for that.
The safe route to school.
As part of the engineering and the planning, would it be good also to have some painted crosswalk, maybe from the parking in front of the cemetery that then goes across? It might be helpful for people there as well. That is a kind of a dangerous, people whip around there and
We've talked about how to fix that, I know.
It's, I wonder if it could be part of this?
It's difficult. I think in the time I've been in the city, that I've lost that, when there's the churches, Nazarene Church, they lost their sign twice. We've lost, we've had somebody go up the stairs twice in the time I've been around. So it really takes somebody, you know, if they're not going to pay, if they're going to hit a stair, a concrete stair and railing, or a brick sign, crosswalk's not going to slow them down too much.
Well, and I'm thinking even though to get people, if you, we do have a lot of kids that walk up there, just to give them some guidance, too, on where to go if they did some site study, too, if somebody's whipping around there or coming down, where might be the best way to put a, you know, it just might be something to look at, because it's very unsafe there.
It's a terrible curve, as a motorist, as regular traveling public, you have trouble on that indeed, because sometimes the kids from the middle schools do go there for an activity, so.
That's right.
And I believe in the time I've been around, essentially what you're seeing is that we have added a yellow line going down West State, so the tendency is to go that way rather than get stuck on Miller and Walker.
For autos, for cars?
And semi-trucks.
Yeah, right.
I've seen them hung up on
So since we are talking about safe routes to school, I'm a little, the Morris Avenue has been put on hold, sort of?
What, we removed it from the safe routes to school, this project, which allows us more money to do more on Shannon or just have it. We could not meet the deadline in terms of property acquisition, and they required that we owned it. It was rather, what we've come up with is that we will indeed have a spur to that gravel drive that the Hawking Conservancy Districts, that then connects with the bike path. ODOT required it to connect paved fully, all the way to the existing bike path. So the original design that Andy had presented, that he thought had been awarded, that they said, no, it's got to go other way. So crosses two other properties, and we just think we've come up, at least in the interim, with a good interim solution, and we'll look at that in the future.
I'd just like to second a couple of things that have been said, and member Fall and Mr. Member Pappy, which is just that Miller, Miller has that dog leg that goes on to Walker, and I think to have that sidewalk for safe routes to school is critical in my mind, because I do see people walking down the middle of the street, and I also like the idea of a crosswalk, or at least something to help guide individuals.
Maybe not as much drivers, but to guide pedestrians, too.
But I'm glad this is happening, moving forward.
It's pretty dark there, too, at night.
We do look at lighting, we're always looking at lighting.
And I appreciate the engineering plans to take into consideration the homeowners' concerns there as well, just being mindful of that, and it's nice that the sidewalk will be not going into private property, because there's a short space there, very little room for accommodating a sidewalk, it'd be right up in people's
Yes.
I feel we've accommodated the citizens' concerns to the best of our ability, but still being able to accomplish getting in the safe route.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why I want to acknowledge my appreciation.
Committee meetings.
They're going to talk about
Any?
It must be
But they were very anticipating.
We're done, we're just waiting to hear about your special session, so I do have certain items that need to be passed.
I'm getting ready to move into that, but
Thank you.
Okay. We know that Ms. Fall and Ms. Pappy will not be here next week, but I need to poll other members. Mr. Butler, do you think you'll be here next week? We need to have two special sessions.
Donuts, pizza?
You can bring either one or both.
Yeah, I'm expecting to be here.
Okay.
Is it holiday, am I missing something?
No, Mr. Reisner, you're
I'll be here.
You're here.
We're taking holidays.
I will be here.
Mr. Patterson and I'm here. We are relatively certain that, remember Nysley and member Gosney will also be here, so we'll probably have, one, two, three, probably five voting members plus the president if we need to, which would allow us to have special sessions, but we can't, we can't suspend, you know, suspend the rules. But we are planning to have two special sessions next week.
Time is good for noon by 7:00.
All the above?
Sure, I'll look for emails to
Jeff, anything better for you?
With a special session, you don't need to suspend, that's what you're saying. That's correct. Okay.
Send me an email, whatever you want me to hear, I'll be here.
Okay.
Anytime.
Okay. Same with, everybody's anytime, so, okay, we'll talk to these people and see. Okay, so we have not set the days yet, because we need to, because, yes, and the administration, seriously, you think you'd be ready on Tuesday with the stuff, Monday?
Tomorrow? Tuesday?
No, he means next week.
Next, we're looking at next week.
I would think by Tuesday.
We don't, okay.
I would just note that the planning commission will meet Wednesday of next week at noon.
So, how about our first meeting being on Tuesday? We'll let, we'll announce it loudly and publicly, when the date, when the time is set, and the second meeting is set also.
Okay.
And we will begin putting together this task force to talk about multi-house suite parties, and I'll be reaching out for some people, and the rest of you who are interested, please contact us. Mayor?
You're also putting together the Commission for Sustainability Environment, that's-
Yes.
So there'll be fielding questions to you, or somebody who's not here?
Debbie, anybody who's interested should send information to Debbie.
Okay. The member Fall, excuse me, I had someone who asked me about this, you're actually planning on putting yours together in September, right?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, so, and I'm hoping to get underway with this task force that I'm talking about to have some resolution by September. Not resolution to all the problems of the world, but a resolution that we would offer as a-
It's a big order.
Yeah.
I don't know, I kind of like that.
Think big.
I'm like- Think big, right, yeah.
Get it done.
I'm sorry, we've dragged on a long time, so.
No, that's okay.
We are adjourned at 7:57.